The Parkertown Council for July 19th at 7:00 PM. All council members are present. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any special presentations tonight? None? Then we will move right into public comment. Just as a reminder, public comment is taken three ways. We can either do public comment in person by signing in and coming to the podium. We do public comment via Zoom, and Danette will check on that in a couple moments. We also do public comment via email to the town clerk's office by 5:00 on the day of the council meeting. And I believe the clerk's office has sent us a few public comments that will be included in the minutes of July 19th, mostly regarding traffic on Matsonbacher by construction. Do we have any public comment in the room for anyone wishing to make public comment? Come on up. You already know the drill, but if you'll state your name and address for the record, and I'll stretch your three minutes.
My name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live at 3862 M Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134.
Excellent. Go ahead, sir.
I have articles and comments in this folder that I will give to the attorney.
Excellent.
I grew up in Colorado. I have lived here since 1984. Falling in love with Colorado is easy. The hard part is keeping Colorado lovable. On July 1st, the Denver Post reported that a Colorado rancher donated $1 million to the Colorado State University Center for Human Convergical Coexistence. This gift is intended to minimize conflict between people and animals. This is true love. This is the kind of love I get excited about. Ecosystems exist only with top predators and bottom food sources like prey dogs. Making excuses to kill predators or kill prey dogs means there will be nothing. Is spreading poisons all over Colorado a good idea? What kind of love is this? The Environmental Working Group, that is EWG, has come to Colorado. Their latest report was given to the Denver Post on July 15th, 2021. So far, EWG has found that toxic forever chemicals, that is PFAS, likely are used and discharged into water at 501 sites in Colorado. These sites include car washes, petroleum stations, sewage facilities, parts makers, printing plants, and many others. Did you know forever chemicals, that is PFAS, are used in oil and gas drilling and fracking? A report from the New York Times Company printed in the Denver Post on July 13th, 2021, reviews this issue. Did you know fracking wastewater and waste fracking chemicals are used in road building and road maintenance operations in Colorado? This issue has been discussed in Colorado without knowledge of the health effects, that is sulfur-reducing bacteria overgrowth and many other issues from the forever chemicals or other chemicals involved. A Gunnison County Commissioner told me that Gunnison County Commissioners banned this practice in their county some years ago. And our doctors are just now beginning to understand what all these poisons in food, water, air, and products do to our health. And I have a report here from Cody Goodman in 2017 about that discussion in Colorado on this issue. Prey dogs have lived in Parker for thousands of years. Give our prey dogs a few safe homes of their own. Let's keep Colorado lovable. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, for showing up. And also, I look forward to, I think I'm meeting with you and your group on the 4th of August. So I look forward to a lot more information there. Thank you. Danette, do we have anybody online wishing to make public comment?
Yes, Ciderman2021, I will promote you.
All right. Give me just a second here to zero us out. All right, and who do we have?
Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record? He is not on.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to make public comment, Danette?
Now, if there are any other attendees that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. No others.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item number four, Reports, Items, and Comments from Mayor and Council. I will start to my right. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a few things this week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a few things this week. Thursday, Councilwoman Hefta and I went to Cherry Creek Reservoir with the Cherry Creek Water Basin Quality Authority and toured some erosion concerns, looked at some future needs within the park's properties, specifically the delta where Cottonwood and Piney Creek come in. We've got some degradation, some aggregation. We've got some serious issues, all of which need to be addressed to keep a habitable habitat. To keep a healthy habitat, thank you for the fish in the reservoir. The whole circle back is, as we do, and the importance of what we're doing when we improve the reaches along Cherry Creek within our town, and when other communities do the same thing, this slows the sediment moving down into the delta and creates a healthier habitat in the reservoir. So I just want to reiterate the importance of what we do when we do these reaches within the Cherry Creek and slow the water flow and thus the sand pickup and allow the natural process to filter out the phosphorus and the other bad things that get into the reservoir. So again, it was very, very informative. It was good to see everybody again, and I look forward to seeing them soon. Then on Friday, Councilwoman Hefta, Councilman Hendricks, and then Bo Martinez, we toured Ruderhess, and I'll leave that update to Laura. But again, fascinating, it's my third tour, and I learn something every time. They're doing wonderful things over there. And then Sunday, John Dyak, Todd Hendricks, myself, and the mayor were at the farmer's market and talked to the citizens. We had our booth with Let's Talk Parker, took in a bunch of ideas. I know they were documented on what people love about Parker, what they would love if Parker did something, just some great ideas, and it was just good to chat face-to-face. I will remind the citizens, we are all here. We would love to meet with you, so please don't hesitate to reach out. I think that face-to-face communication is of the utmost importance. I will always continue, and I think we will all always continue to strive to meet with you one-on-one if possible. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Pogue.
I don't have anything for this week.
Councilmember Hendricks.
As Councilmember Rivera mentioned, we did the tour of Ruderhess. It was a great, great experience. Also, Let's Talk Parker was wonderful at the farmer's market with you and Councilman Rivera and Dyak. Also, as a liaison to the Parker Senior Center, I'm happy to report that they got a Philip S. Miller grant in an amount of $15,000. And finally, last but not least, it was great to have the Chamber have a move in the park with some dancing, I'm told.
I heard there's a video floating around, too, so.
And we apologize.
We'll have to squash that, yes. Councilmember Dyak.
I can wait for the video. I mean, are we going to queue that up?
Our monitors aren't working over here.
Yeah, sure. On the 13th, I had a visit with our town administrator and our Deputy TA slash Economic Development Director, otherwise known as Michelle Kivala, and Bo Martinez. We just, we talked a little bit about big-picture stuff. I like to sort of get used to some things, so discussions are good to me. I also attended, along with Councilmember Hefta, the E470 30th Anniversary Celebration. The road is 30-ish years old, and the staff came out. We had food trucks. I think we had cornhole, basketball. And the executive director stated that this was sort of the first time that all of the employees had a chance to really interact with each other. So it was a good celebration and nice to see. That is all, Mayor.
Councilmember Barrington.
I was in steamboat with my family this past week, so I don't have anything to report.
Excellent. And Councilmember Hefta.
It was a very, it was a very busy week last week, with my attendance at the E470 Celebration, the Cherry Creek Basin and Water Quality Authority, and the Parker Water and Ruderhess Tour. Just that last tour at the Parker Water and Ruderhess was an excellent tour provided by Ron Redd, and went over a lot of information about water, water for the area, water for the county, and the partners with the county as well, which would be Lone Tree and Castle Pines. And that we're in a very good position here in Parker to have an excellent Parker Water and Sanitation District and plenty of water in the Ruderhess Reservoir to support all the development in our area. Also, want to say the movie in the park with the Parker Chamber of Commerce and the Osgood Real Estate team that sponsored that was excellent, and I had a great time chit-chatting as well with the mayor and Councilmember Hendricks. And also want to do a special shout-out. You know, whenever we get to use our services in our town, I just want to say a special thank you to Parker Adventist Hospital. Their ER and their children's hospital is a great section. If you ever have to use the Parker Adventist Hospital ER section, you will find that their care is outstanding. So that's all.
Thank you. And that was not related to movies in the park?
No.
Perfect. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So, Council, before you, you have four items on here, so we'll entertain a motion if there's no questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through 5D, sir.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Please vote when prompted to do so. And that motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Town Administrator. Our town administrators' report for summer of 2021, we're already there, is a beautiful, glossy picture of Discovery Park and the fountains out there. Madam Administrator, do you have anything to add to your report? Great. And they can find it online on parkeronline.org. Great, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, ordinances. First ordinance for tonight is ordinance number 3.193.5 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance amending the Parker Auto Plaza Development Guide pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance. Brianna, you're back.
Yes.
Great.
I'm filling in for Stacy tonight, so.
Great, welcome.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Second Amendment. Excellent, thank you. The subject site is located south of Pine Lane, west of Parker Road, north of Pondrosa Drive, and east of 20 Mile Road. The town is proposing to amend the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Guide to expand the permitted uses within the open space planning area to include parks, playgrounds, and outdoor recreation uses. The proposed PD amendment would allow improvements on a portion of Track A of the Parker Auto Plaza subdivision or the area shown in green on the map above, which would include the development of a park that would be open to the public and directly accessible from Baldwin Gulch Trail. This park would be constructed in association with the proposed multifamily residential development located directly to the north. Town staff has been working with the multifamily property owner to use approximately one acre of the Baldwin Gulch open space or Track A as a park site. In order to achieve this, the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Guide needs to be amended to allow for active recreation uses. In addition, if approved, the multifamily property owner will be required to pay the costs associated with construction of the park improvements, pay a usage fee to the town, make park improvements available to the public, and maintain all park improvements. The subject property is located in the central commercial corridor area as designated by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. This area is intended to provide commercial uses which focus on retail services, lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. The requested rezoning will allow for active uses to be installed along Baldwin Gulch open space to serve the residential property to the north, as well as visitors of the commercial site and those traveling along the trail. Strategy 1 in Chapter 13, Open Space and Recreation, of the Parker 2035 Master Plan recommends providing adequate parks and recreational facilities and programs to serve the diverse and changing needs of the community. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria ensure that a need exists, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, and there are adequate services to serve the proposed site. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine criteria set forth in the Land Development Ordinance. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, and all those requirements have been satisfied. Planning Commission heard this item on July 8th and recommended approval. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council approve the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Second Amendment. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, Brianna. Before we go to public comment, council questions. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Hefta.
Just no questions. I just would like to say that I have reviewed the criteria. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barrington.
Yeah, I think that this completely aligns with the town's strategic goals, and I don't see any reason, I'm in support of this.
Great. Councilmember Dyak.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. So, I want to clarify, because in the past, there's been discussion of not using open space for parks with recreation. Are we now changing that policy?
I'll start, and feel free to jump in. I'm filling in, so I'll give as much information as I'm aware on this project. So, this, for this rezoning and for the use of this, staff has worked hard to ensure that it is open to the public, it is directly accessible to the Baldwin Gulch. So it's a little unique in this instance, so it's not necessarily our policy.
But it is truly a change in application of open space requirements, correct?
Yep. So let's direct that to Director Fusa. And John, if you can walk back through real quick the history of what got us here, and then provide some clarity on that question.
Sure. Happy to do that. This issue and the proposal in front of you dates back to the proposed and approved rezoning for a property that we call colloquially the Eisenberg Property, located at the southwest corner of Parker Road and Pine Lane. It was, the property owner proposed and received approval for a rezoning to allow multifamily residential component at the western or southwestern quadrant of the property. That approval dates to early first half of 2020, if I recall correctly. Under town code, all private residential development has to provide a certain amount of private park space for the benefit of the private residents or the private residential development. So the property owner is in contract to sell the land to a multifamily residential developer consistent with the approved rezoning. They're proposing a multifamily development, thereby triggering, under town code, the requirement for private park space to serve the private residents or the private residential development. They have, in laying out their site, they are proposing to meet their requirement under code for the park space for their private residential development by a combination of onsite, park, facilities and amenities, and then also to, if councils, if the town approves, to improve this adjacent area, which is currently used for trail and for the Baldwin Gulch Trail, with some active recreation amenities to meet that requirement. So, this change in zoning, which is limited only to this property and this project, and is not a change in policy town-wide, it's specific to this proposal, this project, and this developer's request to meet their parks, their park requirement onsite with about one acre of improvement off-site, would, if approved, would help them meet that requirement. And it would take an area that has very few amenities and improvements and improve it, not only meeting the obligation for park space generated by code through the apartment development, but instead of the improvements being private for the benefit and use of the private residents only, because it would be in Baldwin Gulch along the trail, would basically take a private amenity improvement, about one acre, and convert it to public use and enjoyment, be totally open to the public, would be developed, financed, and maintained by the adjacent private property owner in perpetuity, and would provide a public benefit here. So, in terms of, that's what's happening here, this is not a change in policy. This issue and this improvement off-site in the adjacent Baldwin Gulch along the trail is solely limited to and specific to this project, and would not apply beyond that.
Okay, John, has this been done before? Has open space been taken to meet the needs of private property?
So, the open space here is public, currently open and available to the public. That would be unchanged. That would continue. There's no, it would continue to be owned and open and available to the public, and the area adjacent to the trail would be improved to town standards and specifications, open and available to the public without limitation or restriction. So there's no conversion of public area and use to private. Actually, it's the other way around.
Okay. So what I'm getting at here is the fact that we are putting active park use on open space, correct?
So, this area under the Plan Development zoning is an open space and detention planning area within the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development. So, the open space remains, the trail use remains. There's a public benefit being proposed by the applicant and developer to put recreational amenities adjacent to the trail, which would be available to all users and all residents of the town.
I understand that, but it's a change in use compared to what we've allowed in the past.
So, in this instance, again, solely limited to this parcel, there's no change in use. It's currently open space and trail. That will continue. It will. It will be, there will be an additional benefit in terms of recreation by seating, furniture, and a playground.
I still see this as a change in use. When you look at all the documents dealing with open space, it has not previously voluntarily, to meet the needs of private entities, converted part of that open space to private use for recreational requirements.
So, I appreciate the comment, but just for clarity here, this improvement on public land is not limited or restricted to private use. It's, it would be fully open to the public. So, there's actually, it's taking what typically would be a private park improvement entirely on private land for the use and enjoyment of private residents, and taking a portion of that and putting it in the adjacent town-owned land, which by definition and by, and by the zoning and any agreements that run with it, would have to be open to the public, not just the residents of the residential development, but would be open to any and all of us for our use and enjoyment.
Irrespective of the issue of open space and using it to meet private land developments and leaving that open to the public, it is a change in use of using open space for this type of active use, correct?
So, I would not characterize this as a change in use. This is an additive use. When I look at what the principal or predominant use of this, of this land is, it will continue to be trail with adjacent open space. There will be a small park element alongside the trail. But remember, right, Baldwin Gulch, and I know you know this, Councilmember Pogue, Baldwin Gulch is many multiples of acres, running all the way from Pine Drive in the east, west toward, to the Cherry Creek. So, that actual tract owned by the town is currently trail and open space. That will continue. A small one-acre element will be improved for public use and enjoyment with this park.
Okay. Just want this on the record, please.
So, the predominant use will stay trail and open space.
Thank you, thanks, John, for that answer. Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you, Brianna, but I'm going to go to the director. John, if you could, could you walk me through the developer's options as far as what would we get if the developer decided to choose cash-in lieu? And what are our options if that was the situation?
So, the options are actually three. They can meet or attempt to meet their park requirement onsite. They can meet some of their park requirement onsite, and code allows a cash-in lieu option, which you've referenced, which means they essentially pay their way out of a portion of the obligation subject to Town Council approval. Those monies then go into a fund, which are held and reserved for future use by the town for improvements at an indeterminate time of an indeterminate nature that could be done either in the vicinity of this project or somewhere else. Here, they've asked for, so those are the, and then also this option, which they've had to ask Town Council for through rezoning and then through the rezoning application, would be to, instead of a cash-in lieu, in which they would fund whatever the dollar value is of the one acre that they're short in terms of park improvements triggered by their project. Here, in what they, there's a dollar value attached that by assessed valuation and value of improvements. Those go into a fund, and they get spent, they could be spent in the short term, or they could be held for the very long term, in an indeterminate nature and way. Here, they're proposing a third option, which is to actually make one acre of park improvement adjacent to their property to meet their obligation if the town is willing to approve it, and to do it with their project in the short run with actual benefits and improvements and amenities that are to town standards and acceptable to our park design and dedication standards, and to do it in the short term in an area adjacent to their property, but also accessible from the Baldwin Gulch Trail, which is, which makes these publicly usable and accessible and enjoyable.
So, with that said, and I did catch something in there, we could put those funds into the cash-in lieu, we could put those funds into a fund and sit on them for a while, so future councils or future parts of this organization could use them at a later date, and it does not have to be adjacent to the residents, the future residents of the town, correct?
That's correct. The funds could, would be set aside in an account. They could be used in the short term, within a year, but they could be held for years, 10 years, 15, 20 years, and unused until there's a need or a purpose.
Walk me through the deal, because this, I think, was the most interesting part of the read. They are funding the purchase and the building of the park, but more importantly, they're funding the maintenance in perpetuity of said park, and the citizens of Parker do not have to pay for said park forever, but they have the benefit of said park, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
But wait, there's more.
There's more.
So, they will also have to pay one half of the in-lugue fee for the land to the town. So, we'll get half that value. The remaining half will be held out as unpaid, but if they default under the license agreement, they'll have to pay the second half to the town. And as you point out, they'll have to maintain that park, they'll have to replace any playground equipment that needs to be replaced, and it's basically theirs to operate.
But in the beginning, the park has to build, be built to town standards, correct?
That's correct.
To our level of, not just a metal slide and a couple swings, this has to be something that matches all of our town standards.
Correct. There's a license agreement, so there'll actually be a contract. Kristen, is there anything I missed?
No.
Okay.
The summary is...
So, there will be an actual binding agreement between the town and the owner of this multifamily project, which will require all of these things, including a maintenance schedule, a replacement schedule. It's all going to be built into the agreement itself, including paying half the cost of the in-lugue up front.
So, on the park sign will be the Town of Parker logo?
Presumably.
Yep. And then, I think, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Questions or questions?
No.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it for public comment at 7:30. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on this ordinance? Or, Donette, do we have anybody online wishing to make public comment?
I see no public comments.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close it at 7:31. We'll bring it back to the council for further questions, comments. Start with Councilmember Hendricks. I'll start with you. Okay? Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think in addition to the financial benefit that we're getting, you know, putting some amenities on our trail system is a pretty nice oasis for those people who are walking, running, or biking. And, you know, to me, that area or the area, the Baldwin Gulch area, is a little bit challenging because it's just, it's just difficult to see if, you know, how you fit in something that, of a park nature there. So, this is a creative approach to providing some additional amenities to our trail patrons, which we have a lot of in Parker. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I just wish that your additional comments had been added in the documentation presented to council. It was not.
License, if you may.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington?
I agree with Councilmember Dyak. I think that this was very creative and thinking outside the box, and I think it completely aligns with the town's strategic goals. It's easily accessible by the Baldwin Gulch Trail, and it's going to serve the public and that new development really well. And it's maintained by a private entity, so I think it's, I am definitely in support.
Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work that went into this on both sides. I think this is a win-win. I look at this as a public-private partnership. Instead of answering the needs of the development, I look at this as a donation. I look at it as a donation to the future of Parker, to the future of the kids that are going to grow up there, the kids that are walking by. I like to compare it to the hospital's donation of the exercise park that we have right here along the trail. It's a benefit to all the citizens, and it improves Baldwin Gulch, and gives an opportunity for people to take a break, enjoy the nature that is there, but still preserve the nature. And again, I will never shy away from free money, so, well done.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah. Lastly, I would just like to slowly restate the approval criteria for rezoning, if I will, if you may. Under Title 13.04.240F, there are nine criteria for approval considerations for a rezoning request, which the staff and the planning commission, and along with the applicant, need to fill out lengthy forms and applications on this criteria. One, there's a need for the proposal, and that's been met. And two, the particular parcel of ground is indeed the correct site for the proposed development. That's been met. There's been no error in original zoning. There have been significant, there have been significant changes in the area to warrant a zone change. Adequate circulation exists, and traffic movement would not be impeded by the development. Additional municipal service costs will not be incurred by the town, which the town is not prepared to meet. There are minimal environmental impacts or impacts to be medicated, and just specifically on this, the proposed construction of a park will have minimal environmental impacts. The proposal is consistent with the town's master plan, maps, goals, and policies, and there's adequate waste and sewage disposal, water, schools, parks, and recreation and other services in proportional degree necessary to the impacts created by proposed land uses. And I'd like to point out that I can see Councilmember Pogue's position on this, and she points out some very good points on this, which is always great to have an opposing view on this, because it helps us come to a more firm conclusion about the issues. And many times, there are issues to debate and to get to the bottom of. And so, that was excellent input, I would say. And I'd also say that we've had great input from other council members here as well tonight, and I have determined that this is a win-win type of situation for this particular park. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments on the side questions? Questions, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.193.5 on second reading.
I'll second.
Tom, was that you?
Yeah.
The motion is made by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when prompted to do so. And that ordinance passes unanimously. Item number eight on resolutions, we have two of those tonight. Resolution number 21-032, a resolution setting the date for consideration of the annexation ordinance for the Town of Parker North, First Amendment, tract D, property for second reading on September 7th, 2021. Brianna, still here?
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution to set the public hearing to a date certain for the Parker North tract D annexation. The Parker North tract D property is approximately .27 acres in size and located between Lincoln Avenue and Parkland Drive on the east side of Parker Road. You can see this property highlighted in blue on the map above. This resolution is the first step in the process to consider the annexation and will set the public hearing date. If Resolution 21-032 is approved tonight, it will set the public hearing date for September 7th, 2021, at which time the council will consider the Park North tract D property for annexation. The property, the proposed annexation is approximately .27 acres of property that complies with the 1/6th Contiguity Rule for adjacency to Town of Parker land. The site still borders Douglas County land to the east. This site is located within the Town Planning Area, is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan, and is identified in the 2023 Mile Plan. Again, this resolution is only to set the public hearing date of September 7th, 2021, for council to consider the annexation. A full presentation will be provided at that public hearing. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 21-032.
Great. Mayor, can I make just one point of clarification, please? So, this is the annexation of town-owned property. So, under the annexation statute, there is no provision for public hearing. There will be a public hearing for the zoning component, so what you're doing tonight is you're simply setting the date for the second reading of the ordinance, which you allow public comment, but it is not a public hearing. It does not carry the due process ramifications associated with the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Jim, for that clarification.
I'll start with my left. Councilmember Dyak, any questions?
No, sir.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Nope.
Councilmember Pogue?
No, sir.
That was easy. We'll open this up for public comments if there are any in the room, or, Donette, on Zoom.
If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. No comments.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council, then. Any further questions or comments?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 21-032, please.
I'll second.
Was that you? Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. And that resolution passes unanimously. Item number B, Resolution number 21-026.1, a resolution to amend Resolution number 21-026, Series 2021, to adopt an amended Town Council Policy Statement 1-8 concerning public hearing procedure and public comment policy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This resolution would amend Town Council Policy Statement 1.8, which establishes procedures for public hearings and public comment periods. During the pandemic, the town instituted a procedure to allow the public to submit comments electronically through an established portal, and then those comments are included in the minutes for that upcoming meeting. All of this revision does is memorialize that practice in your policy statement.
Excellent. Council questions? We'll start to my right. Councilmember Rivero?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Mr. Dyak?
No, sir.
Councilmember Barrington? Councilmember Hefta? All right. Seeing that, this will be a fast one, too. So, we'll open it for public comment at 7:41. Donette, anyone online?
There are no public comments.
All right, we'll bring it back to the council unless there's any further questions or comments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll move to approve Resolution number 21-026.1.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Please vote when prompted to do so. And that resolution passes unanimously. With no other business before the Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when prompted to do so.
Oops.
Mr.?
Do it again.
It's always the new ones. It's always the new ones. All right. We can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at 7:42. Have a good evening.